Good evening. I'm going to go ahead and call the Thursday, May 9th, 2024 City Council meeting to order, and I'm going to ask Melissa to lead us in the pledge salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
Next item is roll call. Councilmember Lopez Taft.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa.
Present.
And Mayor Daniels.
Here. Next item, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replay is on Monday, May 13th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed at the city's YouTube channel.
Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Okay, we're going to pull item number seven for a later presentation sometime down the road, and pulling item 10B has no longer applicable. It's moot. And so, any other changes to the agenda? Hearing that, I'll take a motion.
Move or approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schaefer, seconded by Councilmember Middleton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number four, proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights, proclaiming May 2024 as Building Safety Month.
All right, thank you. I've asked Councilmember Lopez Taft to please present this proclamation.
Thank you so much, Mayor. First, we'd like to invite Chief Building Officer Joe Cuff, Development Services Technician Susan McLendon, and a very special guest, Junior Building Inspector Sienna Huddock. Udock? I apologize for the mispronunciation. To the podium to accept the proclamation. I will read the proclamation, and then we will come down for photos. I will read the proclamation. You may want to make some comments, and we'll ask for comments from the dais, and then we'll meet for pictures. All right. Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming May 2024 as Building Safety Month. Whereas our city is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike, and whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings, and whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes, and whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities largely unknown protectors of public safety, our code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas Mission Possible, the theme for Building Safety Month 2024, encourages all of us to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge an essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Building Safety Month. All right. Would you like to say a few words?
I don't know what else we could say. Just to say thank you to the City Council for recognizing Building Safety Month. It's a nationwide celebration of building safety, and we do appreciate the council taking the time to appreciate it.
Thank you. And can you introduce our young star here?
This is our junior inspector, Sienna. She's our ambassador this year, and she's been going around letting everybody know the benefits of building safety this month.
Excellent. Anything you want to say, Sienna?
I'm glad that I'm here, and it's nice to meet everyone.
Excellent. Good. Okay, we're going to come down and take a picture, okay?
The taller post is... There you go. Okay, if I could see another look over here.
Our next item is presentation number five, a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights, proclaiming May 12th through 18th, 2024 as National Police Week.
Okay, I'd like to invite up our amazing, incredible Citrus Heights Police Chief Alexander Turkot to the podium to say a few words and accept a proclamation on behalf of the Citrus Heights Police Department. All right, here we go. Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming May 12th to 18th, 2024 as National Police Week. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas from the beginning of this nation, law enforcement officers have played a vital role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms which are guaranteed by the Constitution and in protecting the lives and property of our citizens. And whereas policing in the United States is a noble profession of tremendous responsibilities, perilous challenges, and great importance to American society, the actions of any one police professional in any instant can change lives and influence individuals in impactful ways. And whereas it is important that our citizens know and understand the challenges, duties, and responsibilities of their police department and the necessity for working together with them in maintaining law and order, and whereas it is fitting and proper that we express our gratitude for the dedicated service and courageous deeds of law enforcement officers and for the contributions they have made to the security and well-being of all of our people, and now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Citrus Heights, California, does hereby proclaim May 12th through May 18th, 2024 as National Police Week and encourages all citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities and their invaluable contributions in upholding justice, enforcing the rule of law, and protecting the innocent, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Alex Turkot, your chief of police, just want to say, you know, this community of Citrus Heights is probably by far one of the best and most supportive communities in the state of California, frankly, for their law enforcement. It's a two-way street. Our folks work tirelessly to try to make quality of life and life safety a number-one priority to the town, help make it the vibrant, safe place that we all enjoy. During Police Week, we take time to pause and realize that this is a serious job that we have. And, you know, unfortunately, this morning ban's not just for Police Week. We literally have lost folks recently, and we wear way too much, been to way too many funerals, but for my staff, you know, we ask that they take time to pause and remember the seriousness of their job and be there for each other and be there for the community. So thank you so much for recognizing them and know that we're here to serve, we're here to stand in that line, and we appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Just go ahead and stay there. We're going to do the picture thing. I will just say that thank you from the bottom of our hearts, totally. Without our police officers, we have nothing. Without safety, you have nothing. And again, don't forget, this is the week where you pay tribute to those that gave their life. And so, don't forget that. Tell your kids about this. Make sure you go home and tell your kids about why this is an important week, okay? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Amen.
Next item is presentation number six, a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights, proclaiming May 19th through 25th, 2024 as National Public Works Week.
Okay, I've asked Councilmember Middleton to present this proclamation, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to invite General Services Director Regina Cave to the podium and her team. Please come on up, and I will read this proclamation, and then I'll allow you some time to say some great words about all the great work you're doing. Oh, wow, it's a huge department. Jeez.
I have an entourage today.
Right. Okay. Whereas public work professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Citrus Heights. These infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, maintaining, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, parks, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. Jeez, guys, you do a lot. In the interest, it is in the interest of public interest for the residents, businesses, and civic leaders and youth of Citrus Heights to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in our community and throughout the region. And the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. And the American Public Works Association has been selected Advanced in Quality of Life for All as the theme for National Public Works Week 2024, which symbolizes how public work connects us all, whether through infrastructure or first responder services, and public work professionals enhance the lives of the communities they serve. Now, therefore be it resolved that the City of Citrus Heights does hereby designate the week, May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week, and urges all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life.
All right, very nice. Go ahead, council.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a minute to realize that, recognize, number one, that a storm comes, a pothole happens. I mean, all of the things that your department, all of you, take care of on our behalf, I can't tell you how much that's appreciated, from localized flooding to sandbags to, it's just endless, and it's amazing that you guys handle it with such composure. Really, it's really impressive. So, thank you so much for all that you do. I just, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate it.
As I look across everybody, I go, there's Mary, garbage, there's Regina, my streets, and I see our engineer and our maintenance guys, and I'm thinking, God, you guys do a lot, and how wonderful, and I do love my bot dots on Mariposa. They make driving better, so I see good things coming in the future, but recognizing you, you know, and then you have your showcase, so you're going to talk about your showcase. Okay, so, just recognizing what you do is incredible. I mean, we do appreciate our police department, but we couldn't function without you guys at all, so it's like, you keep everything moving smoothly in our city. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely, ditto. You know, it's unfortunate that people can't understand that everything that is going on, you know, you see the police, you see the fire, you see those things, those are public things, visible things, and so what you don't see is all the other work being done. And, you know, it's, how can I say this gently? It's like at home, it's a beautiful house until the toilet gets clogged, and so if there's not somebody there to unclog the toilet, nothing else matters. And so, what you guys do is keep us, as you said, moving smooth and clean.
That's what we say, it's a sewer district.
That's right. So, greatly appreciated, can never be said enough how greatly it's appreciated, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. And now it's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, councilmembers, and City Manager Feeny, Regina Cave, General Services Director. I am very happy and pleased to be here before you, accepting the proclamation for National Public Works Week, but I'm more excited, actually have, for the first time in a long time, I have butterflies in my stomach with my team behind me. It's very important for me to acknowledge all of my team, those that are here and those who are not here today, as they are kind of the unsung heroes. You know, they do a lot of the work that we don't know about, the stuff that happens on the weekends, during the holidays, during major storm events. Two o'clock in the morning, you know, someone hits a traffic control cabinet, things happen, and we don't know how they get fixed, but they just do. And this team, they are incredible. They all wear multiple hats. You've seen them at a lot of different events, putting events on with us, such as the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Project this last weekend. We have our public work showcase coming up this Thursday. That staff will be pivoting from their daily responsibilities to suddenly having to set up an event over here at the park and welcome the community to come out and see exactly what we do and how we do it. So I'm just so excited for my team to be here with me, and I'm so excited to have been working alongside of them, not only this last year, but many years now, and how apropos that this year's theme for National Public Works Week is improving the quality of life, and that's exactly what we've been doing, if you've noticed, in the community, our efforts of really improving the quality of life, the beautification of this community, providing incredible amenities for our residents and our businesses, and I just hope to be back here again next year with my team, too, except next year's proclamation.
Thank you very much. We're going to come down and try to take a picture with all.
Stay up here.
Yeah, we'll stay up here, you guys come up here.
Yeah.
Glad I thought of that. Oh, my God. No, it's this sweet, they keep drinking it.
Nope, you guys are good. Just stay smiling. Thank you.
All right.
I just want to say one thing. The public work showcase, Regina, you didn't, it's next Thursday from, I write my notes. Where's it at?
Three to six.
Three to six, where's it at?
Three to six at Van Maron Park.
Van Maron Park.
And I'll have a slide two on that later.
Oh, you will? Okay, great.
Absolutely. But yeah, three to six, next Thursday at Van Maron Park.
I missed last year, but I'm going to go this year.
Okay, next item, please.
Next item is public comment, and if you wish to address the City Council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each. The mayor has the discretion to reduce the allotted time. We have a countdown display that will flash red at the end of the allotted time. Also, consistent with the Brown Act, the council is prohibited from engaging in a discussion or taking action on any item not appearing on the agenda. And Mayor, I do have, I just wanted to note a couple of speakers' sheets to read for items nine and 10, and I'll read those as we get to those items.
Okay, very good. The first sheet I have is for Kevin Bracy. Kevin, are you related to Val?
Say it again.
Are you related to Val?
Val Bracy?
Yeah, Val Bracy.
No, but I hear about a lot of Bracy's in West SAC and all the different areas.
All right, good guy. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Kevin Bracy. I was born and raised in Citrus Heights, so this is home for me. I live in Oak Grove now, but I was born and raised in Citrus Heights, and I'm a motivational speaker. I like to call myself a motivational entertainer. I'm almost guaranteed that everybody that's in this room, if you have kids, if you have nieces and nephews, if you have grandkids, I can almost guarantee they've been in one of my assemblies before. So, I'm having an event, a local event, on May 18th. Born and raised San Juan Unified School District, elementary school, middle school, and high school, so I wanted to bring back some love and some positive energy back to the city in which I lived, where I grew up, and the high school where I graduated from. And it's called a positivity party. It's called Kevin Bracy's Greatness Talk Positivity Party, where I have a passion to teach our young people, TK through sixth grade, the importance of building themselves up with words. Greatness Talk is when we use words to build ourselves up, when we use words to speak kindly towards ourselves, when we use words to encourage ourselves, when we use words to encourage others, to build others up, and to speak kindly towards others. So, 250 to 280 times a year, I am in elementary schools around the city of Citrus Heights and Sacramento and everywhere, talking to our young people about greatness talk. But on May 18th, there's a positivity party taking place from 2:00 p.m. to 3:15. So if there's anybody in here who has grandkids, who has nieces and nephews, who have children that are TK through sixth grade, come out. It's going to be a lot of fun, it's going to be positive energy. My goal is for May 18th to be the most positive hour and 15 minutes of 2024. Now, but it's all for a cause, and it's a fundraiser, and the cause is called It Takes Guts. We have a son, his name is Kobe, he was born as a preemie. He was born with a rare autoimmune disease, and autoimmune normally happens in the gut area. So my wife created an organization called It Takes Guts. So what we're doing is we're raising money to help families maneuver through pediatric chronic illness like we had to maneuver through. Our son is 22 now, but he's had 14 major surgeries in his 22 years of life. And when you sit and you watch your son yelling and screaming for hours on the toilet, trying to figure out what is wrong when he's a baby, we're in and out of the hospital, we're at Stanford, we're all over the place, trying to get a diagnosis for my son. We never got one, but it was hard to figure out how to find some normalcy in life. So what my wife did is created an organization based upon what we needed when our son was going through it. So that's what It Takes Guts organization is. It's 100% of the proceeds is going to It Takes Guts. We want kids and families in the room for a positive, an hour and 15 minutes of the most positive energy that we can muster up for 2024. That's happening on May 18th at Mesa Verde High School. So if you have any kids, families, please bring them out. And I brought flyers as well.
I have a question, do we need tickets for this?
Yes, you need tickets, so I have flyers here, and you can get tickets, you can either scan them, or you can go to It Takes Guts. I have flyers, so I'll give them out. It-takes-guts.org, where you can get tickets. It's $10 a ticket, or there's a family pack for like 30 bucks. Again, 100% of the proceeds is going to It Takes Guts.
I just want to say, you came and spoke to, I think, Reach one time.
Yes.
Yes, and so you're, you are phenomenal.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
I also attended that Reach gathering. It was amazing. It really was great. It was...
Thank you.
I left feeling a lot better about things.
Let's go.
Yeah, awesome.
So you didn't tell us where you graduated from?
I graduated from Mesa Verde High School.
Okay, good.
Then I went to American River College, so I'm a local guy. I was born in Mercy-San Juan, even though that's technically Carmichael, I call it Citrus Heights. So don't be mad at me. I went to American River College, got a baseball scholarship from ARC to the University of Utah, went and played some pro ball, and I came back to do what I love to do, to give back to our kids and let them know that they can live their dreams.
Yeah, thank you, buddy.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
Okay, next up I have Sarah Williams. Top that, Sarah.
You know why I'm here, you've talked to me before. My name is Sarah Williams, I'm with Be Kind TNR. I normally, TNR cats in the rural Linda, North Islands, Antelope area. I am getting a lot of calls for Citrus Heights, and they're telling me they have called animal control here, and they're told, do not feed the cats, they will go away. Where can we starve an animal and make it go away? How is that legal for an officer to be telling people, starve an animal? Are you going to tell them, don't feed the dog? We would get arrested for not feeding the dog. Do cat lives not matter? Do community cat lives not matter? I don't understand this. You guys have nothing in place for the cats. Heck, you don't have much in place for the dogs, they have to go to Auburn. There needs to be something in place. You guys are failing the animals. It's not right, and for an officer to tell somebody, stop feeding the cats and they will go away? No, they won't. Do you know why they're there? Because nobody will intake them. No shelters will intake these cats. So people get their free kitten off the internet, it grows up, it comes in heat, throw it out the door, because they don't want to go get it fixed. So now it's out there having more babies, creating bigger colonies. There's nothing here. The kittens that I've been seeing from Citrus Heights are in such horrible shape. Should kittens be losing both of their eyes from lack of care? Because nobody will take them in? Should kittens be losing a leg because of lack of care? It's not fair. Should we not feed them their mom to where that mom can't feed their babies and they just sit there and shrivel up and die? Is that right? Are you going to tell me not to feed the dogs that are running loose also? Because it seems all of the shelters, and you guys don't even have a shelter, think dog lives matter, but all lives matter. Cat lives, dog lives, people lives, everybody. Are we going to tell people, stop feeding the people? Where are we going with this? Starving animals? Is that right? Is that what your guys' animal control officer is telling people? Yes, it is. He told somebody today. Is it right? Would you want to stop feeding a stray cat and let it starve to death? Ms. Middleton? It's not right. You guys are not doing the cats, the dogs, any favors, but you guys need to start doing TNR. You guys need to help these trappers, get the problem under control. Give them vouchers, something to get into a spay and neuter clinic to get these cats fixed. We shouldn't be footing the bill for these cats that are community cats, because nobody will take them in. I don't know what you guys expect, but you expect us to just leave the cats out there to starve? You expect us to just watch them die? Your animal control officer's not going to come, and if he does come, they're going to tell us, don't feed them, they'll go away. You know what? It doesn't work, because another shelter left 53 cats for 19 days. I went in and trapped all those 53 cats. There was nobody feeding them. They were all sick, they were all starving. We put 10 of them down, they were in such horrific condition. Do you guys really want to be known as the city that's letting all the animals die? Cat lives matter, and you guys need to step it up. You need to figure out how you're going to fix this problem. You need to... You need to get some TNR, and you guys need to figure out how you guys are gonna intake all these kittens. Us, we can't do it. I'm a small rescue, I run out of my house. I have friends that are doing it out of their house without a 501(c)(3). It's not fair that we're doing all of the city's intakes, because they can't take them. Kitten Central's already full, and they're taking tons of kittens from Citrus Heights. Where are these kittens supposed to go? Are we supposed to just leave them out there to die? That's how I, that's how it seems. We're supposed to just leave them out there to die, because nobody's gonna help. None of the official places want to help, and that is sad. Cat lives matter. Have a great day.
Thank you, Sarah. We're not allowed to do it back and forth, as you know, because it's not on the agenda, but I appreciate your comments, and I can just say in general, we're moving in the right direction. We're moving in the right, we hear you, and we're moving in the right direction. Sandra, okay? Sandra Decker.
First of all, Mayor Daniels, I wanna thank you for coming out and at least experiencing what we experience in the way of cats. A short update of Linden Lime. There are still some cats left to fix there. Right now, there's no kittens, but problems with neighbors feeding the cats and feeding right in front of our faces has made it a little bit difficult to sort of wrap up. But most of the cats have returned. The house was sold, but the house is still in escrow. So, the cats have returned to the house, and the realtor's been notified, and Eleanor next door is feeding the cats. But she's feeding the cats because Michelle Lee and I are giving her the food, which is costing us about $300 a month or so to give her the food. They're not her cats, and they would starve otherwise. Michelle and I were out on Guinevere. I think that's gonna be the new hotbed location, if you guys are looking at locations. We picked up cat, we fixed cats, and we picked up a litter of kittens, only to find that many of the neighbors have cats and kittens. And the last count, I think there are at least four litters that need picked up. And this is one of the things that, you can, you can get appointments, and you can do whatever at Placer County or whatever, that place is not too good. But anyways, you gotta find a place for these litters of kittens. Nobody's, animal outreach is full, everybody's full. I mean, I have them in my house, I have them in my living room. Michelle has them in every room in her house. Sarah has them in every room in her house, and what do you do with them? I mean, you can only do so much. So, you need a place. We did the 35 cats with Placer County Animal Services. It was five TNR and then two drop-offs. The only problem with that was the fact that I would mark them friendly. They were friendlies, they were supposed to take two friendlies, two ferals, and I'd mark them with friendly, and they'd end up in a barn, in a barn cat situation. Luckily, we found out about it, and we were able to retrieve one of those cats that was very friendly out of their barn cat program. So, I think that their answer to everything is just throw it in a barn and be done with it, so I'm not really too sure that that's a good choice. To sort of update you a little bit on what Sarah was saying, got this email from the lady over in Guinevere, and she, this is from Becca at Citrus Heights Animal Control. We spoke for about 15 minutes a few minutes ago, very nice lady. She'll be speaking with her supervisor for some direction about our cat problem. Again, this is one of the ones that has like multiple, multiple litters and cats to be fixed. I informed her, I was working with Michelle, explained our request is for assistance from them. They don't have traps, they don't, can't help with TNR appointments, they can't help with kittens to get them fed, treated, and/or adopted. They only assist with ill, deceased animals. I explained that some of us are willing to assist in the feeding and care once the cats are returned, but we cannot help the cat problem without the city's help. Some of the neighbors move and leave their domestic cats behind, that's a common occurrence. Neighbors get mad about the cats on their property, that's true. This is the most important part, though. Update, received a call back from Officer Hernandez. We have heard that this has been talked about before, so this is the first time we saw it in writing. We had a lengthy conversation, we agreed we have a cat problem. His bottom line was, "Don't feed the cats." Wrong. If you don't feed feral cats, they are gonna get sick and they're gonna die. And that's the end of it. I, I, I am sick of going out every night. My husband and I feed 17 colonies, 100 feral cats, to try to keep them healthy and to keep those colonies down. You stop, you stop feeding, and then you can't keep track. The trappers cannot even keep track of what cats are fixed and what are not, because we feed them in one location. That's how we count them, that's how we know what's fixed and what's not fixed. But now, you have Animal Services saying, "Don't feed the cats." We have heard this before, this is the first time that I saw it in writing. Okay. And he says, "He did say that he can loan out traps if they have any that come available, but they don't have any funding, they have no resources for a vet or a doctor to fix the cats." They had 35 appointments at Placer County, they went fast. Those were for Linden Lime, those weren't open to everybody. We asked again why, he asked again why I'm feeding the cats, I explained why. He said he supports TNR, obviously, he doesn't, because he doesn't even want the cats fed. However, asked why I'm feeding the cats. That's all he wanted to know from her, was why she was feeding the cats. Well, you have to feed them to keep track of them. I tell people that all the time, when I'm feeding cats at night, and they'll say, "Why do you feed the cats?" I said, "Because I can keep track of them." I know every cat in my colonies, every single cat. Can you, can you...
Sandra, I need you to wrap up your comments, okay?
Okay, well, that's my comments. I think that we need, we need some funding from Citrus, excuse me, from Citrus Heights for food, so that Eleanor can get some food, and some of these people can get these cats fed. They're not their cats, they're Citrus Heights' community cats.
Thank you very much. Melissa Hayden?
Hi, guys. I've been working with a lot of you, and gone out with Jana, Tim, Brett. I love that you went out to TNR. Would love to meet with you two as well at some point, if you guys would like to get in communication. So, I'm working with Animal Services. I actually just took a call from Tiffany. What we are looking for is, I'm gonna tell you right off the bat, is Elk Grove is destroying us. They are taking up 60 spots at ASN a month, and that's Auburn. Why is Elk Grove going to Auburn, and we don't get that opportunity? So, after discussion, what I'm asking for is 50 appointments per month for TNR. We have plenty of rescues and rescuers who are willing to volunteer their time and drive up there, do the trapping, and help. If we could get more officers, that would be great, but right now, we do have people and that we can utilize to get this done. If we do that, we're asking for $5,500 a month from city council to get that in budget, so we can get vouchers and hand them out, so that we can at least have 50 appointments per month for TNR. If we could, I'd like to ask for an additional $500 in cost of food that goes in those traps and to those colonies, so that we can get them trapped. We have been working on the dog situation. We've been really great about getting the tags. I'm trying to get more chip events. That's something we definitely need to get. We don't have enough officers to get more chip events. I know that's really big. We have them, we can do them. I've been researching into that. Other counties have used fire departments to do a little event at the fire department. Just different things, maybe we can try to look outside the box to get those chips into dogs and make it easier to get these dogs returned back home and faster and keep them out of the shelter. And so far, everything's been working. I know it takes time, so those are my requests. $5,500 for vouchers, $500 for food. If that's possible from city council, I'd really appreciate that. That would help clean up our streets. I have no problem helping getting those out and doing that. We did the 20 TNRs at Linden Lime, the Eight Keepers. It went fairly well with PCAS, but I think if we can get 50 from ASN, it might be a little bit better. Try to get with Elk Grove, beat Elk Grove a little bit, be competitive here. And I know throwing money at a, at a problem doesn't sound like an answer, but sometimes, when it comes, when we are so in a pandemic of, I mean, we have a baby kitten here that was rescued on the way here. That's, I mean, we, we didn't mean to bring an animal here. That's not, that's not our intentions to disturb the, disturb the meeting. But it happens, because we're constantly rescuing. I did three dogs this morning, you don't get, get time or answers on that. So, we're here to help the city, we're here to help the community. We have plenty of volunteers. We would like to get animal control involved. I've even talked to them about volunteering to work, trap one night, like Brett, and see what TNR really is, so that they have an idea, where they can make a schedule that works, because TNR isn't done midday usually, it's usually done at night. That's when the cats come out, that's when it's quiet, and I think that would really help our community. So, that's what I'm requesting, that's what would work for Animal Services and get us going.
Thank you, Melissa.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Okay, a couple of public comments to read?
Those are for items nine and 10. I'll read those at that time.
Okay, next item, please.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, mayor. I wanna start off by saying Happy Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. This is for a time for us to reflect on the great impact that our API community has had in the Sacramento region and the state of California. And I've attended several events, including one that was at the Papa Headquarters to kick off API Heritage Month, and just to talk about these things. It's really important that we remember the things that all individuals in our community have done to help, help our, help our communities grow. I also attended the Arcade Cripple Creek Grand Opening on the 5th, Cinco de Mayo, so I missed out on my tacos, but I was out, I did a two-mile walk with Councilmember Lopez Taft, which was very much enjoyable. We got our steps in that day, I think we got like, what, 12, almost 12,000 steps? It was a lot.
It was a lot of steps.
It was a lot for us. We were kinda like, alright. Not something you wanna do after dinner, you like with your kids, but you know, maybe a little portion of it, we're gonna incorporate that into our routine. I encourage you all to go out there and explore. It was really nice, you could see the butterfly trails and all types of little creeks and things, and there are also little activities along the way for you to kind of look and spot for. So, please check it out. I know a lot of work went into making that happen with the, with SMUD and with the county and with Orangeville Parks. It's a really great partnership that we actually got to see to the finish line. And this morning at 7:00 AM, I was out there doing the great job of our community by attending the Cal Chamber Summit Breakfast, where we listened about what local businesses are going through throughout the state of California. It was really impactful, we got to hear the governor speak, but more importantly, I got to talk to business owners throughout the Sacramento region about what's going on and how can we help. The biggest conversation was around, of course, retail theft and what we need to do to kind of fix that. And those are my comments.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lopez Taft.
All right, yes, thank you. AAPI Month, I really appreciate your acknowledging that. At the end of the month, last month, on April 26th, I attended District Attorney Ten Ho's Citizen Award Ceremony. Always very interesting, the different things that we get invited to as elected officials, and this was a very, very touching ceremony, where the district attorney and staff acknowledged the heroic efforts of citizens, regular people who go out of their way to help save and change someone's life. And so, he had several, several hero stories that were awarded by his assistant DAs, and you know, not a dry eye in the room. It was a very, very good event. I also attended the Sacramento Valley Manufacturers Association Challenge, Manufacturing Challenge Event at San Juan High School. Such a wonderful event, and if you all know, the fourth was when it rained really, really hard, suddenly, and then we had a beautiful day for our Trailblaze event. But this is where we saw our young minds and their technical creative endeavors. And I took pictures of as many tic-tac-toe projects. That was their challenge to create, you know, their take on a tic-tac-toe board, and it was amazing what they came out with, and I really am a believer in the creativity of our youth, and so we need to encourage that as much as possible. And I think Councilmember Schaefer's efforts with SVMA, attended also the Trailblaze Event on the 5th. Can't say enough about how beautiful that trail is. Just yesterday, I attended the precursor to the host event today, which was the Cal Chamber Capital Summit, along with the international briefing. And that was really interesting, because I got to talk with fellow chamber members. I am a chamber board member for the Citrus Heights Chamber, and it's very interesting when, whenever groups of people who are like-minded gather together, what they can do. And in talking about organized retail theft, and how do we combat that? And how do we support our small business owners, who are the majority of who creates jobs, who keeps our economy going? What can we do and how can we continue to support them in our communities legislatively, at the state level, at the local level? Everyone's having this conversation, and it was really heartening to hear that California is once again a wonderful leader and exporter of goods and services, and we are still highly sought after for those goods, services, and our agriculture. And so, it was very, very good to hear about that, and that's my report.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you, mayor. So, you know, the last couple of weeks, it has been very busy for me in that I'm really hearing kind of not, just people calling me out of the blue and, and telling me what's great that's happening in the, in the city. Even people that are outside of the city. I had the occasion to go to the, to the VFW in Fair Oaks. I was one of, one of our residents there, volunteers, and he had an issue there, and I sat at the VFW, and a lot of people were talking about how things are really changed in the city. And I'm like, well, I, I just mentioned them, that I was a council member, and they had really positive things to say about the changes in our city. So, I just, I'm super impressed with, with our community, and our community's really responding and feeding back to me that, hey, there's some really great things going on. So, I'm delighted to, 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 to see that Dewey Drive is about to get, get repaved. Also, there's gonna be a lot of work around the, around San Juan, or sorry, Greenback and Dewey Drive. So, watch out for this Saturday. After about 8:30, it's gonna be, traveling through there is gonna be a little bit challenging, just for a couple of days, though. So, I did also attend, I MC'd the Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Alliance High School Challenge. This is something that, that SVMA came up with, and the deadline was March 4th. And so, the, and the, the projects were due on the, on May 4th. And I was just amazed, it's only two months, and some of these kids really, there's a kid that, not only did he machine his, all the pieces for his magnetic tic-tac-toe game, he machined those on a five-axis machine, and I was, I was really, I looked at him, and I saw that they were anodized, and I'm like, well, that's, I know what the minimum cost for an anodized run is, and I'm like, that's really expensive. And he goes, "No, I did it myself." He actually mixed all the acids and put the electrodes in and really did. I was just blown away that this kid figured out how to anodize different colors for his pieces. So, and it was just amazing to me, all these young minds. It was for a very simple thing, a tic-tac-toe game. They did it vertically, they did electronically, they did it a travel game, where you simply rotate a disc inside between two pieces of wood. It was really impressive. And we had, there were a total of 60 students that were enrolled, over 19 schools going from, area from Colfax down to South Sacramento, out to Lincoln and, and up to, to Placerville. So, Citrus Heights was really central to all those schools. We had about, we had 17 students that actually showed up on that day. Unfortunately, it was raining, and we had some issues getting into the building, but nonetheless, it was a great success. I'm really glad that not everybody showed up, because had everybody showed up, we'd have been in big trouble. We wouldn't have, have had the space to accommodate everyone. So, very exciting thing, seeing these young, young people. Some of them are, there are, I would say, probably half of more seniors, but there was a ninth grader that did an electronic tic-tac-toe game, was just amazing. So, it was really, really a fun thing, so I look forward. This is our first year, by the way, first year that we did this. So, I'm really excited about what next year's gonna look like. So, I also... this. So, I'm really excited about what next year is going to look like. So, I also, on the next day, I attended the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Opening, which was fantastic. We had lots of officials there. I happened to be walking with Manuel Perez, our representative on the San Juan Unified School Board. Some really good things going on on the school board level, and I'm glad to see. His representation is really fantastic there. He is so tuned in to many of the things that even the district administration was unaware of. So, very good there. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and move on with the meeting here.
All right. Next up, Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa.
Geez, I didn't do half the things. You did. I did go to the Cripple Creek Trail. It was good. It was well represented. There was a lot of people there, and it was very, very organized. Then, husband walked from, you walk from Tempo Park to C by C Park, and so, he walked it and I drove it. And then, you know, they, anyway, that's a great trail. And so, I can't wait to get my Costa Mobile, and I'm going to take my Costa Mobile over there. I went to the sewer meeting this morning, or yesterday morning, and just a couple of things happened at the sewer. You know, July 1, you will see an increase on your sewer bill. They had a meeting here a few months back about any questions you might have had about that notice that came in. Everybody got a notice about the rate increase. And three people from Citrus Heights came to that meeting. So, those three know why the rates are going up, and if you have any questions. But they do have lifeline assistance if you are of lower income, certain income limitations, you can get help with your sewer bill. We have, the big thing is, I don't know if you know the buffer lands. So, you have your sewer treatment plant in Elk Grove, and then around the sewer treatment plant is a huge acreage of what they call buffer lands, because it buffers the treatment plant from residential use. And in those buffer lands live thousands of species of things, animals, birds, whatever. And so, once a year, they allow the public to come to the buffer lands and march around, and they have all kinds of great activities, folk music. There's so many kids' activities. It is an opportunity to see some of the rare creatures that you would never see even at a zoo. And so, this year, it's on May 18th, which is a Saturday, from 10 to 2. And you can find out more about it, how to get there. You know, it's the Consumnis River exit, and it tells you the directions right online. So, if you Google "Walk on the Wild Side Sacramento 2024," make sure it's not the 2023 one. And the 2024, you'll get all the information, and it's really something to put on your calendar, take the kids to. And, you know, we're citifying, and we keep putting more and more houses and people in here, and crowding out the nature part of it. And so, the trail in Arcade Cripple Creek, you know, is one way to celebrate our urban escape routes. But this is buffer lands, you know, once a year, they open it to the public. So, it's one opportunity to go see it, and it's definitely worth it. Now, sewer, also, they have, if you've been delinquent, 19,000 people haven't paid their sewer bill. Wow, 19,000 households have not paid their sewer. I was shocked. So, but if you think the city puts out swag for the Arcade Cripple Creek, here's the sewer swag. I love it. It's a plunger on the end of a pencil. I love it. They did it for Earth Day. That's my favorite. Now, the mosquito district has a tiny, tiny little fly swatter, a little tiny fly swatter. It's cute. This is, this plunger is just, isn't it cute? So, anyway, that was, the gal from Folsom saved it for me. I'm sorry they all left, but I was going to tell you, this is also, all the weeks we celebrate this and that. This is National Pet Week, nutrition and exercise, with an emphasis on nutrition and emphasize. So, they said, with more than half the US pets and dogs and cats considered overweight or obese, and we won't talk about humans, the AVMA, which is the American Veterinary Medical Association, encourages pets and their owners to provide proper nutrition and get exercise together. So, this is great to go take your dog for a walk at the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail, or around your neighborhood, and just walk the dog. You know, I was reading, my dogs live on an acre, and I thought, well, they don't need to go for a walk. Why should they, when they get loose, they see the neighborhood anyway. But it's important to a dog to get, you know, the kinds of insight. He gets smells that he doesn't have when he's in his own yard. He gets things he can see, and so, it helps them become better dogs. And then, the other thing to, Bradshaw Animal Shelter is celebrating empty shelters. And as it was said, how crowded the shelters are. So, thanks to a grant from, oh, they make, what's that cookie place? They make, this is the one, empty shelters between May 1 through 15, so there's another week left, Bissell, Pet Foundation, Bissell, you know, that makes the floor stuff, Bissell. They are funding, you can adopt for free, there's no adoption fees. You got one or two pets you can adopt at Bradshaw. It includes spaying, neutering, vaccines, a lifetime microchip registration, and one-year licensing if you're a county resident. But we have our licensing here. You bring your materials, get them licensed. And it's, shelter is open Tuesday through Sunday from noon to 5:00, and Wednesday from noon to 6:00. And you can look at, view the available pets online at animalcare.saccounty.gov. And if you're, you know, up for adopting a pet, now's the time. The price is right. And, do I have anything else? No, I think that's it. That's it.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Couple of things. Attended the Sacramento Transportation Authority Meeting this morning. Main thing out of that is just the budget and moving forward. Also attended today the Sacramento, excuse me, the Sunrise Marketplace Board Meeting. And for those that don't know, the Sunrise Marketplace is the one mile, approximately one square mile area that round the Sunrise Mall area, and all the businesses that are there. Just good things out of that. Again, nothing specific to report. Mondays with the mayor. I want to publicly thank the First Lady of Citrus Heights, my wife, who stood in for me on Monday for Mondays with the mayor. I can't believe she had that much courage to do it, so I want to publicly thank her and all of that. Attended the Capitol Corridor Joint Powers Authority Meeting a little while back. Budget stuff again, it's that time of the year. Out of that, mainly the main thing, it's nice, ridership is up, fair recovery is up from COVID days. And so, the Amtrak train that goes between here and the Bay Area is continuing to get better and better. And I think once they add the, they're adding a third rail for the Roseville stop, which will increase that, it'll be even better. Attended with my other council members, the Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Association Challenge, which was quite remarkable, as they have mentioned. And the thing that I got out of it was, it's amazing. You can put a challenge on so many different people who can come up with so many different ideas. Just remarkable. Just remarkable, the variation of ideas. Also did the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail kickoff, and get out there and do it. Just have a good time. Get out, walk, take your dog, take your bike, take your kid, all that fun stuff. Let me see. For the future, we've got the Chamber Lunch coming up on Tuesday, if you're a business. And even if you're not, I highly recommend attending the Chamber Lunch, the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce Lunch on Tuesday, the 14th, at 11:30, right here in City Hall. Right, Community Center. I don't know why I do that every month. Community Center. And then, we've got Brews in the Burbs coming up on the 18th, Saturday, the 18th. And that's up at the Sunrise Mall area. A lot of fun, a lot of brews, and a lot of music, and that starts at 5:00 PM. And then, I just want to remind people that starting in July, our meetings will be switching to Wednesdays, with the first meeting in July. And then, please don't forget, Sunday is Mother's Day. If not for your mom, you would not be here. And she just wants you to tell her how much she matters. So, don't forget to do that. And if there's a strain, pick up the phone. Pick up the phone and tell your mom you love her. Final thing is, I see some people in the audience who look like they might be around 18 or younger. If you are, could you please stand up? And then, could you come up here real quick to the podium? And we just wanted to extend our appreciation to you. So, if you could come up to this podium right here. And tell us who you are, where you're from, and why you're here.
Owen Whacker, from Bella Vista High School, as we all are. And we're here for a government project kind of thing, so.
Thank you, sir. Oh, yeah. You're going to do it. Come on. No, no, no. No, no, no. We don't allow that.
Hi, hello. My name is Alex Black. I'm from Bella Vista High School. We're all seniors.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, buddy.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
My name's Connor Slape. I'm from Bella Vista High School, and we're, yeah, we're just here for a government assignment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you all in the same class?
Yes. Andrew Lynch Roberts, Bella Vista Senior. Yes, we're all here for a government assignment.
I'm Kayden Cullen, and yeah, I'm a senior as well at Bella Vista, and we're just here to observe how everything's going, and you know things work.
Sam Kelly, Bella Vista Senior, and I'm the exact same reason why all these guys are here.
Hi, I'm Bryce Schools Union. I'm same reason for the government meeting.
My name's Akita Liptonenko. I'm a senior at Bella Vista High School, and I'm here like everyone else.
Very good. Thank you.
I'm Joe Thomas. I'm here for the same reason. So, thank you guys for having us.
Okay. Does she know we're getting closer to her? I mean, does she, come on up. Come on, hurry.
I'm Haley Welsh, and I'm here for the same reason everyone else is.
Haley, you did good.
I'm Ava Nelson, and I'm from Bella Vista, and we're just doing our government project.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rosa Ossiteremi, and we're here on behalf of Bella Vista, and we're trying to kind of participate in our community and learn more about how our county works, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Juliette West, and I'm here for the same reasons.
Hi, I'm Andy DeSalle, and like they all mentioned, we're here for our gov class.
Thank you. Okay. Can we have you guys go ahead and come up right here? We're going to take a picture of you.
Proof for class, right?
Proof for your teacher.
You can do it after.
Yeah, we'll do it after.
Well, give our assistant one of your phones, and we'll make sure you get it.
Yes, absolutely. Anyone want to volunteer a phone?
All right.
Yeah, that's right. It's our future right here. Here we go.
Evidence. That's right.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Hold on, don't go back yet.
Put your phone on. Put your thing on.
Okay. So, can anybody here explain to me what the council, how our council and our government, you've been watching this, what do we do?
I know who it is. Absolutely.
I would have said too.
Well, a lot of our natural disaster, like, damage is resolved by the city council, and you know, a lot of our, like, resource, like, teams are kind of gathered by the city council to fix our roads. And you know, I've noticed it, you know. I notice a pothole after a storm, and you know, next weekend's full. Like, it's, a lot of the work that you guys do is like, it doesn't go unnoticed, so.
Show of hands, how many live in Citrus Heights?
Come on, get them up. All right. One more, real quick.
One more quick, real quick thing. So, these people here, we all live in Citrus Heights, okay? The city employees, the city manager is, we kind of set policy, and the city manager is responsible for implementing the policy that we set. That's how this works. So, the city, so we're the, really, we are here to represent you, because we all live in Citrus Heights. So, same thing if you live in the county, you have a board of supervisors. Their board of supervisors serves the same function that we do. So, there you go, quick lesson.
Okay, and you're all on live TV, so don't forget that. And it'll replay at another date if you want to see.
Check it out on YouTube. It's going to be awesome.
Thank you very much. Now, go sit down. And you don't have to stay for the whole meeting, okay? But we hope you do. And that's it. Next item, please.
Next item is consent calendar, item eight.
Does anybody wish to pull the only item on the consent calendar? Yeah, go ahead and approve a...
You're funny.
Any motions?
Move approval.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Middleton and seconded by Councilmember Schaefer. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number nine. The subject is Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Project Phase Two. There are four resolutions for city council consideration. The first is authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with George Reed for the Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase Two Rebid Project. A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with SOMAS to provide construction management inspection and materials testing for the Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase Two Project. A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number three to the agreement for professional services with Bennett Engineering Services for the Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase Two Project. And a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an SD-14 system enhancement agreement with SMUD for the Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase Two Project.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm Leslie Blumquist, City Engineer with the General Services Department, here to talk about Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase Two. The Phase Two Corridor is located on Auburn Boulevard and extends from Rush Park to the north, past the city limits, and into the city of Roseville, to the intersection of Auburn and Orlando. The map on the left of the screen shows the approximate limits of the project circled in red. The dash line towards the top is the approximate Citrus Heights-Roseville border. On the right are a few photos of what this portion of Auburn Boulevard looks like today. The Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase Two Project is essentially a roadway reconstruction project. It will be similar in scope to the previously completed Phase One project, which extended from Sylvan Corners to Rush Park. And it was completed in 2015. The picture on this slide is a picture of the Phase One segment today, and it's what we expect the Phase Two segment to look similar to at the end of construction. So, what exactly will be constructed? One major item is that all the overhead utility lines will be undergrounded. As you see in the photo on the right, there's no overhead lines, there's no wooden poles on the sides of the streets or in the sidewalk. All of the utility infrastructure will be placed in a joint trench underneath the road for the length of the corridor. Minor roadway widening will also occur to allow for the installation of both bike lanes and widened sidewalks. The sidewalks will be separated from the roadway by a landscape planner that will provide space for trees, other landscaping, as well as new decorative street lighting. The raised medians in the center of the roadway will provide a traffic safety benefit by separating vehicles traveling in each direction, but will also provide space for additional trees and landscaping. The transit stops along the corridor will be upgraded and enhanced for accessibility. The underground storm drain system will be upgraded, and a new traffic signal will be installed south of White Avenue as you enter the city from the north, allowing increased access and turning, safe turning maneuvers both into and out of some major commercial developments on the northern end of this corridor. The new traffic signal will also increase pedestrian connectivity by providing a safe way for pedestrians to cross from one side of Auburn to the other. The new traffic signal will also be built into a new custom-designed Welcome to Citrus Heights Gateway Arch. And finally, the entire roadway will be finished with a fresh asphalt overlay and new striping. During the design, we had three very distinct, different gateway arch options. Ultimately, the rendering that's shown on the screen now was selected by both the community and the city council as the preferred design. The project includes this archway and the documents to be constructed in the northern limits, as it's going to be incorporated into that new traffic signal. So, here's the history of the project. This project actually has roots back to 2005, when the Boulevard Plan was adopted. The Boulevard Plan was a specific plan that acts as a guide to the revitalization and enhancement of Auburn Boulevard between Sylvan Corners and I-80. Following adoption of the Boulevard Plan, the city council adopted the Second General Plan in 2000... Following adoption of the Boulevard Plan, the city council adopted the Second General Plan in 2011, and included Goal 29, which was to plan, design, construct, and manage a complete streets transportation network that accommodates the needs of all mobility types, users, and ability levels. After adoption of the general plan, the city designed and constructed the Auburn-Sylvan Intersection Improvements Project, as well as the Auburn Boulevard Phase One Project, completed in 2015. During the end of that construction, design on the Phase Two Project began, and in 2015, city council authorized preparation of a letter to SMD requesting the undergrounding of the overhead utility lines for the Phase Two segment. Around that same time, council adopted the bikeway master plan, the pedestrian master plan, as well as the environmental documentation for the Phase Two Project itself. 2020, the final engineering on this project began, and in 2021, the gateway design arch was selected. 2022, council adopted a resolution establishing an underground utility district on Auburn Boulevard, and in 2023, the design was completed. We put the final plans out to bid, and finally, 2024, today, we're here to consider awarding the construction contracts for the Phase Two Project. In addition, while the planning and engineering efforts shown on the previous slide were underway, public engagement was also occurring. Staff prepared informational videos to share, social media content, local media ran several stories, it was included in newsletters, meetings with property owners, neighbor associations, we had open office hours, and we also had a community-wide survey on the design of the gateway arch. As part of the community outreach, we received a lot of support on the project, and as staff was seeking grant funds, many members and organizations of the community provided written letters of support that were instrumental in obtaining funding for the project. On the screen now are the, a sample of the members, organizations, and businesses who did provide letters of support throughout the life of the project. On the screen now is a history of the grant funds for this. There's been quite a journey to get the grant and the funding for this project put together. Back in 2018, the city secured the first grant for construction in the amount of $4 million through the SECOG Regional Local Program. In 2019, staff was successful in obtaining both a $2.86 million Placer Sacramento Gateway Corridor Grant and another $1.512 million in an active transportation program grant. In 2021, another $9 million was obtained through the SECOG Regional Funding Program. And lastly, again, in 2023, the city was successful in obtaining another $8.6 million through the SECOG Funding Round. So all in all, nearly $26 million in grant funds have been secured for the construction of the Phase Two Project. But it doesn't stop there. Back in 2005, the SMD Board adopted their Strategic Directive Number 14, or SD-14, which recognizes that the relocation and undergrounding of electrical lines is desirable to communities for many reasons, primarily aesthetics, economic vitality, safety, and accessibility. Each year, they set aside some funding through their SD-14 program to underground electrical lines. Since the city council authorized the letter of intent, which was sent to SMD back at that time, staff has been working with the district on the design of this project. Through SD-14, SMD will be contributing another $1.365 million towards the construction of this project to cover a portion of the undergrounding and the joint trench installation. In addition, they'll be performing some work at their own, with their own forces, and that value is estimated at just under $1.5 million for both time and materials to actually physically move the lines into the new joint trench. This project was originally bid back in late 2023, however, the original costs came in excessively high, nearly $9 million over the engineer's estimate, and on February 8th, city council, you rejected all the bids and you directed staff to rebid the project. At that time, in an attempt to reduce costs, the design team made modifications to the bid package, including reduced traffic control requirements, allowing 24-hour lane closures, trenching backfill modifications, and a reduction in the amount of storm drain replacement, just to name a few. And on February 14th, the project was rebid, and bids were opened on April 10th. The low bid received was from George Reed, Inc., in the amount of just under $29 million. The total estimated cost, which includes the construction, construction management, design support, inspection, and all other associated costs, is $35.515 million. Here's a summary of the various contracts for consideration tonight. The first is the construction contract award in just under $29 million. There is a 10% contingency recommendation on top of that for any unforeseen issues that might come up during construction. We also have a nearly $3.6 million contract for SOMAS for the construction management inspection, materials testing, and quality assurance monitoring. And then we have a small budget for the design team for their support during the construction phase, so totaling that $35.515 million. Here's where the various funding sources are recommended. So previously, we discussed the nearly $26 million in grant funds. That will cover the majority of the project, that and the addition of the SD-14 contribution of $1.365 million. But in addition, there's just over a million dollars' worth of work that the city will be constructing on behalf of a couple utility districts, SASD and the Water District. They will reimburse the city as part of this work, the cost of the items that we'll be performing on their behalf, and that's estimated to be about $1.1 million. So that leaves just over $7 million in various local funds that would cover the balance to get to the $35.515 million. So tonight's requests are to approve the various contracts, including construction, construction management, the engineering support, and also to approve the SD-14 system enhancement agreement with SMD to allow for the exchange of funds for the undergrounding. I am here to answer any questions, and then I have the motions on the next slide when you're ready.
Okay, I do have one speaker sheet ahead, excuse me, that Amy needs to read, but any comments or questions before we go to that?
I have questions. You want to read?
Yeah, let's go ahead and read that then first, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Amy.
Sure, we received a written public comment from Rick Hodgkins, and he states, "I rise in support of this item, as this is very important. If I'm not mistaken, and I hope someone, whether they're on the city council or one of the presenters, can elaborate if this is at the end of Auburn between Antelope Road and the Placer County-Sacramento County Line and the Citrus Heights-Roseville Line, where there is not a sidewalk in most areas on either side, and there is not always crosswalk to cross over to the other side either, so I support this, thank you." And that concludes the written comment.
Okay, thank you very much, go ahead.
Well, hopefully, he's watching, because all his questions will be answered. You said you're gonna widen the sidewalk, you're gonna put in bike lanes. Are we doing all that with what's there, or do we have to do some private property condemning and moving into private property? How we, where's all the space coming from?
Yes, there was a right-of-way, during the right-of-way phase, there was some acquisitions, and so small slivers of land were purchased along the frontage of several of the properties to allow for that widening. So in order to conform, there will be some work on private property, but that right-of-way has already been secured and is now part of the city's right-of-way.
My other question is, do we still have the Auburn Boulevard Business Association? I don't know if you would know that, Megan would. Do we still own it? Do we still have such a thing? I haven't heard anything from them.
I can help with that. I know that it's one that they've been looking to get reactivated.
Reactivated.
Yeah, there's somebody that's interested in reactivating that, so we're actively talking with them.
Okay, well, if they want me to ever, that's my district, so if they need me for anything, let me know.
There's actually a meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May 21st.
Tuesday, May 21st, can I go?
Yes, I will send you the information.
Will you send me something?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And, okay, that's it, that's all I had.
Just a quick comment, we've been looking at this on the budget, it's been in their, our budget for years, so anybody who has concerns about how we're funding this, it's been built into our budget for quite a long time, so. That's all, that's the only comment I had.
Yeah, I don't know why we want to rush this, you know? It's been 19 years, it goes back to when I was on the council the first time, so.
Me too.
Yeah, yeah, so it's rather a miracle, it has arrived, and so, great work, tons of work, forever work, don't give up, stay with it, kind of a thing, and we finally made it, so it's gonna happen. Any other questions or comments for staff? If not, we'll entertain motions.
I'd like to make a motion, adopt Resolution Number 2024, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with George Reed Incorporated for the Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase Two Rebid Project.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Schaefer, seconded by Councilmember Lopez Taft. Any questions or comments to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion, adopt Resolution 2024, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with SOMAS to provide construction management inspection and materials testing services for the Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase Two Project.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schaefer, seconded by Councilmember Lopez Taft. Any comments or questions to the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next. Motion passes.
Keep going.
Okay, I'd like to adopt a resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number three to the agreement for professional services with Bennett Engineering Services Incorporated for construction support for the Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase Two Project.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schaefer, seconded by Councilmember Lopez Taft. Any questions or comments to the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, next.
Adopt a Resolution 2024, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, authorizing the city manager to execute an SD-14 system enhancement agreement with the Sacramento Municipal Utilities District for the Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase Two Project.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schaefer, seconded by Councilmember Lopez Taft. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, please.
Mayor and city manager, Finney, can I take this time to just make one quick comment? Regina Cave, General Services Director, I just want to take an opportunity to acknowledge Leslie Blumquist, our city engineer, for getting this project through to this finish line to get to construction. It's been a lot of work, especially this past year, as she's been kind of our sole lead engineer in general services, along with Daniel Kerr, our senior engineer, but this has been a huge feat on top of the Auburn Boulevard project, getting our Arcade-Crippled Creek Trail project done, getting our San Juan Complete Streets project out to bid, and now ready to get our Dewey-Dry Van Maren project out to bid. So this is an incredible person right here next to me, and I just wanted to give her some recognition tonight.
Absolutely, great.
Are you saying we need a new engineer to help her out?
We are working on it, so if anybody's watching and you're a registered engineer, we do have positions available, we're recruiting for.
Okay, next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number 10, the subject is Planning Commission Discussion, and staff will give a presentation, and city council will discuss the recommended, or the proposed following options in the staff report, which are, one, direct staff to proceed with the necessary municipal code updates to dissolve the planning commission, or C, appoint an individual by majority vote to fill the at-large unexpired term on the planning commission, or D, do nothing, the planning commission would be a six-member commission until January 2025. And good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers, Amy Van, City Clerk. So the planning commission has been around for a long time, shortly after the city's incorporation in 1997, and they were established pursuant to Government Code 65100, which basically states that the city council shall, by ordinance, assign the functions of the planning agency to a planning department, one or more planning commissions, administrative bodies or hearing officers, the legislative body itself, or any combination thereof. Presently, our planning commission is comprised of seven members, five regular members that are appointed by individual council members, and then two at-large members. The planning commission holds hearings and communicates with stakeholders, residents, staff, and council members pertaining to land use decisions. They review use permits, design review permits, subdivision maps. They also review and make recommendations to the city council related to general plans, specific plans, and the zoning code. Additionally, we do have one at-large vacancy on the planning commission, the term is ending December 2023, so that is up for city council consideration. So the discussion items for the city council are the first to discuss whether to proceed with necessary municipal code updates to dissolve the planning commission, consider appointing an individual to fill the at-large vacancy, or do nothing, and the planning commission would be a six-member commission until January 2025. The city did receive 13 applications, two applicants have requested to withdraw their application at this time, and I do have a spreadsheet with the list of the applicants that the council at that time can consider, and I will note nominations for the at-large when that, the city council considers that.
Can you repeat that, Amy, how you wanted to do that?
I have a spreadsheet, and I would ask that at that time, when the city council considers the at-large appointment, I'll take two nominations, and I'll just tally up at the end, and then if there's any nominations from the city council, based on what the tally results in for the at-large position.
Can you clarify, do nothing would leave six or leave five?
It would leave five members.
It says six on the thing.
It'll leave six.
Why with six? There's five now. If a do nothing is, it'd be five.
Well, we currently only have one vacancy at this time. I know the staff report said that we had two, but that has since changed since the...
Max left, and I thought Remick resigned. No?
Not at this time.
Did that change?
He has not resigned.
Oh. Well, that was the last thing we got in the mail, I thought he did. Did you? No? I'm the last to know anything.
And forgive me, I know you explained it twice now. Just wanted to make sure it's clear in my mind. If we decide to appoint an individual, what would be the process again?
So the spreadsheet will have each of the council members' names with all of the applicants, and so each council member would just nominate their two, top two applicants, and then it would tally up to see, based on each council member's two nominations, if one or more has three or more.
And if there are ties, how do we break those ties?
That's up to the council, if someone wants to suggest and make a nomination to appoint somebody.
Okay. Thank you very much. Casey, what are you doing over there?
I was gonna suggest arm wrestling to settle the tie.
Okay, and is that it?
Yes, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I have the...
Okay, any comments or questions for Amy on this side?
And Mayor has stated I do have some written comments, and I understand you do have...
And I'm sorry, yeah, before I go to those comments, any initial questions or comments for Amy? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and start calling some folks up. I want to call up my favorite former neighborhood association president, Kathy Morris. You're just my favorite former neighborhood association.
Former? Mr. Mayor, and council members and staff, one of the things that I like best about Citrus Heights, I've only lived here about 25 years, so I wasn't raised here, is the sense of community, the sense of participation, the fact that people really care about this community, and they're willing to say so. It works, communication works in both, in all directions. It comes from the elected officials, from appointed officials, from the city, and most importantly, in my opinion, is from us, the citizens, the residents, the business people. We live here because we want to. We shop here, we work here because we want to, but we expect you to listen to us, we expect to be heard, and one of the things that I believe is, the planning commission, for example, is a great place to be heard. Now, a lot of us don't go to the meetings, we don't go to the planning commission meetings, maybe we don't come to city council meetings, but we talk to our planning commission members, we talk to our city council members. It's important to have the groups the city has, such as the planning commission, for us to give our opinions to. You need to know what we think. Some of us, as you well know, will tell you. Other people have to be encouraged. You want the input from the citizens of Citrus Heights. The last thing you want to do is get rid of the planning commission. Should it be five members? Should it be five members or seven members? I can't say that, but it should be there. You need more input, we need more input in Citrus Heights, not less. You don't need to get rid of a group like that, you need to keep it and encourage people to participate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Michael Lagomcino.
Well, how do I follow that? Good evening, members of the city council. My name's Michael Lagomcino, and tonight I wish to correct the record of a statement made on the agenda for tonight's meeting and recently in the Citrus Heights Sentinel. I did not serve on the, for eight years on the planning commission. I was sworn in on December 13th, 2013, for a term of two years. In January of 2015, I was picked to serve for another two years, starting in January 14th, 2015. The last meeting of the planning commission I served on at that time was January the 11th of 2017. On June 28th, I was sworn in again to fill the remaining term of Christie DeSill, who resigned. Mr. Jeff Slowey asked me to serve her remaining term. Therefore, I had a break of approximately six months, not continuous. I enjoyed my time on the commission and learned a lot about land use planning. Only two members of the current city council know what it's like to serve on the planning commission and what it entails. Let's talk about what two members of the council want you to think about tonight, because they were the ones that wanted to bring it up. I don't know why they want to dissolve the planning commission. I haven't heard anything why they do, I don't know. They haven't stated their reason. We've heard about how hard you work during your statements of what you did during the following two weeks, and now you want to add more work to your duty, more work to your duties. The planning commission does not just review and recommend proposed city ordinances, amendments to the general plan, the annual capital improvement program, plan, or other issues related to the consistency with the general plan. They also hold hearings in a, in a public forum. This includes use permits, design review permits, subdivision maps, and not to mention EIRs. How many of you spent a lot of time reading EIRs? It takes quite a bit of time. The decisions they make are not necessarily forwarded to the city council for action, but there is one time when the decision they make is heard by the city council besides the recommendations, and that is the appeal process. If you decide to get rid of the planning commission, how are you gonna handle the appeal process? Ask Dr. Jana, she made an appeal one time to the city council on a decision that we made that she didn't agree with. Do you really have the extra time to study the material to make an informed decision? Once again, we have all heard about how much time you give to the job being on the city council. Tonight, I'm asking you to consider item four, do nothing. The planning commission will do fine with a six-member commission until January 2025. The commission holds, on an average, of only 8.3 meetings a year for the last six years, and I'm withdrawing my name for consideration at that time. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, sir, very much. Next up, Janie Ricketts. And as Janie's coming up, I want to mention that I met Janie at a Mondays with the Mayor, and thank you so much for everything that you brought to that meeting.
Well, I do appreciate our council a lot. I've been a property owner for the last 46 years in Citrus Heights, and I've really seen a lot of growth, a lot of maturity, and I like it. I'm troubled at the fact that, all of a sudden, it appears that we want to get rid of our planning commission. I didn't see any discussion about why, and I, it just is problematic to me to do that. If I was a developer, I would be concerned that we don't have a planning commission. There's a buffer, just like the previous two speakers. The commission is a buffer to you guys, from the community to you, and it will give a lot more work for you, and I think that you really need the input from the citizens. And it's very important to know what we want. Whether we all agree, that's another story, but it is important that you know what and how we want to grow as a city. I think that's about it. But I, and perhaps I'd like to have more discussion off, you know, this agenda, but how we got to the point where just, I think, two weeks ago, it was brought up that we get rid of the planning commission? That's a very, to me, a very serious position to take. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next up, Tom Sheeler.
Mayor, council members, Tom Sheeler. As you all know, I'm currently on the planning commission. I'll be leaving at the end of my term in December. It was mentioned about the savings of, for staff and the attorneys when we have planning commission meetings, as was just noted about the number of meetings that we have. Obviously, when we don't have meetings, I don't anticipate there should be any, any cost to that. But I do see a great community benefit in keeping the planning commission. We're comprised of independent members, and we provide another layer of background experience and to review projects. As I say, we, myself being an engineer, we have a number of people on the planning commission with all kinds of life experiences, and, and they bring a different kind of knowledge to the table, each one of them. The planning commission provides community members an opportunity to learn about governing and the public meeting process, and prepares community members that are considered running for city council. I don't, I think this is an important thing, not to overlook, not that it necessarily justifies having a planning commission simply for that fact, but it does provide a means of having members, community members, get in and watch, learning the governing process and how a meeting's run, interacting with staff, for their consideration to run for city council. It also provides, for those that are going to run for city council, also provides the community an opportunity to see how they function in a governing, governing position. Many city, many city council members, past and present, have served on the planning commission, and in doing so, have learned many important things about the City of Citrus Heights and city staff, and have developed, developed a greater community knowledge that has served them well in their time on the council. I would urge you to retain the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, thank you for your time on the planning commission, too. Next up will be the Honorable Bill Van Duiker.
Good evening, Mayor Daniels and council members. When you're down near the bottom of the speaker list, it's really, really hard to be original. So I'm going to just repeat some of the things you've already heard. I will preface this by saying, a couple of you have talked about the importance of small businesses, and the Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase Two is certainly a small business enhancement project. I was the delegate from this region to the, from this region to the White House Conference on Small Business back in the 80s, when President Reagan was in office. It was a life-changing experience in terms of exposure to the importance of small business to the community. I'm here to make a comment on the proposal to abolish the planning commission. First, a bit of background. I served eight years on the City of Citrus Heights Planning Commission, and four years before that on the County Sacramento Project Planning Commission. At the county, we met every Monday night, and the meetings were sometimes four hours in length, and I was chair for two of the four years at that time. As has already been said, and as you know, the planning commission has at least two roles. One is to give final approval to certain categories of projects, the other is to make recommendations to the city council. On the recommendation side, the projects are heard and often refined at the planning commission level, and very often allow for the clearing up of misunderstandings on the part of neighbors before the project comes to the council. In both cases, the workload of the council is reduced, and your agendas are shorter. I don't recall hearing any of you council members complain because you don't have enough work to do, and if you abolish the planning commission, your work will certainly increase. And as Tom and others have said, my other concern is that the planning commission serves as an incubator for possible city council candidates. Two of the present council members previously served as planning commissioners, as have several previous council members and previous candidates for council. Development of leadership is always a challenging task. Just ask the Chamber of Commerce or anybody else that is looking for qualified candidates for the multiple positions that we vote on during elections, and seeing citizens on the planning commission gives residents a chance to see emerging leadership potential. When Sunrise Tomorrow begins to grow legs, the workload in the planning department will increase significantly, and having an active planning commission will benefit the entire city. I hope you vote to table the discussion on the abolishment of the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much. That's all the speaker sheets I have. Amy, do you have any?
Mayor, we do have Andrew Saunders here, who actually is here in person tonight. He had filled out an online speaker card, so he can come up to speak at this time.
Mayor Daniels, city council members, originally I thought I was gonna be applying for the planning commission, now I figure I'm gonna be a lobbyist lobbying for option number two, which is consider appointing an individual to fill the at-large vacancy. I have been a homeowner in Citrus Heights since 2019. I came here after the fire in Paradise. I've rebuilt my life, I rebuilt my business, I've been very successful doing that, and I recently retired, and I am currently, at age 59, a student at American River College in Political Science. So to expand on a few of the previous speakers, I do see the planning commission as a vehicle for eventually becoming viable for city council, and that would be potentially what I'm looking at doing. Obviously, my biggest concern would be being chosen for the planning commission. So I had quite a lot of things that I wanted to discuss about myself, sort of as an application for the job, but seeing as the job is not yet possibly available, and you're still making a decision on that, I did have a second item that I wanted to discuss, and I had sent a letter into the city council late last year about the Lincoln Highway project that I was working on, and I'm currently working with Regina Cave and Courtney Riddle, and we've been successful in working to get Lincoln Highway signs put along Auburn Boulevard at the 12 Mile House, the 14 Mile House, Sylvan Cemetery District, and we're looking, hopefully, to put this on the gateway arch. Also, I am a treasurer in the REACH area number three, and at the last meeting, they gave a discussion about community murals that we're looking to do. So I am actually proposing a Lincoln Highway community mural also, so I, I'm looking to be more involved in the city, and I see the planning commission as a way to do that. Regardless of what your decisions are with the planning commission, I'm still working on these other items and look forward to being more involved in the city. And I have met Brett before, I've met Mary Jane at Assemblyman Josh Hoover's opening of his offices, and I've met Jana at a couple of REACH meetings previously, the other two I look forward to meeting at some point in the future. So hopefully, number two is your choice. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, no more speakers?
I just have two written comments to read. The first one was submitted by Albert Fox, and he states, "I find it is necessary to comment on what I see as an ill-plan assault upon the freedom of the community to have input on important development within the city or changes in the various city codes and regulations. I serve the planning commission, conducting hearings, major projects, and proposed rule changes, creeks and trails, medical office buildings, stones, freeway signage. Residents are more willing to speak at a PC, planning commission hearing before commissioners than at a city council meeting. Talking with your neighbors is easier than a formal council meeting. The stated reasoning for less frequent meetings or the need or cost to have staff and attorneys present at meetings is not a legitimate cause for, for removing the planning commission as a public forum. These commissions serve as a check and balance to public planning and land use. I urge you to once again stand and represent our residents, retain the planning commission, and fill the vacant positions. There are volunteers who serve from commitment to the community." And the next written comment is from Rick Hodgkins, and he states, "I support option D, which, if my memory serves me right, that would keep, be to keep the planning commission, which is very important, as they help to oversee the Sunrise Tomorrow project. When I was just last at Sunrise Mall, I saw absolutely no movement. In fact, more restaurants have closed down over there. And as a side note, if we're going to attract more businesses to Citrus Heights, the mall would be the perfect place for them to be. Any case, I would say let's just keep the planning commission. Thank you." And that concludes the written comments.
Okay, thank you very much. I just want to make a little bit of clarification, some of the comments that I heard. The city council has not taken on an effort to eliminate the, the planning commission. A council member who, like every, any other council member, brought up the idea for discussion, a second council member agreed to bring that forward. It takes two council members to bring something forward, and that doesn't even mean necessarily that there's support or opposition to that idea. So I just want to be sure everybody understands, and then there was a comment about the lack of understanding on why and that kind of thing. Well, the, the bottom line is, we can't discuss that. We can't discuss that until tonight. The Brown Act prevents more than two of us getting together and discussing that and/or discussing it during council meetings when it's not on the agenda. So that's the way it works, that, so, so there's, there's not any, anything hidden in the issue or anything like that, it's just sometimes government works in a weird way. And so that's where we are tonight. So we've heard from staff, we've heard from the public. Any comments, questions? Portia?
Yeah. I just wanted to, one, say, Mayor Daniels, thank you for putting that in a much kinder tone than I would have done, because as planning commissioners, folks who are currently serving, who have previously served, we all know how this works. We have to do this in a public forum, and it's not that we're trying to take anything away or anything like that, but I think that, just like you want to make sure, excuse me, that the community has a voice and there are checks and balances, the same thing with our colleagues, my colleagues on this council, I want to make sure that if there is something that's being brought up, there's an opportunity for it to be fully discussed, when now we know, one, how passionate you all are about being here, two, the dollar amount, which to me is negligible in this, in this point, but also why the planning commission is so important. I know why it's important to me, I know why it's important to Tim Schaefer, and that's because of the education that it provides us when we're trying to make our communities better. So I want to say, thank you for giving us grace to have this conversation in public in the way that it's meant to be done, and that I know that when I made that motion to second, to bringing this here, it was just so that Dr. Kapitski-Koska have her voice and be able to see why this is so important to our community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
So I brought this up because, a couple of reasons. One, Elk Grove, I mean, not Elk Grove, Rachel Cordova got rid of theirs one time, and they did fine until they decided to do a lot of development, but they have a lot of open space. So we're 99% built out. There's not, there's hardly any projects left for the planning commission to have a final decision on. Decisions like the mall, or Sylvan Corners, or the pumpkin farm, or anything is gonna end up coming to city council in the end. So I made a list, okay? So in the last two and a half years, the, I gotta put my glasses on, the planning commission could have had 51 scheduled meetings. I only went from January of '22 through March of '24. January 26th, 2022, to this last March of '24. There were 51 could have been scheduled. 36 times, there was no meeting, because there was no items. In case you're not aware, the, our wonderful legislators have passed so many bills that they've made our planning commission redundant for most projects. Now developers don't even need permission from the city. Correct me if I'm wrong, this is true. And you can now just do a project, and you can put residential and commercial zones without zoning changes, and so the, it's getting, and then ADUs don't come to anybody else except planning department or building department, and they give you the plans now. It's, it's so, it's almost as though, it's, we don't do anything. It's, it's, it's so, it's almost as though, it's, we don't do anything. This is not the planning commission that you served on, Mr. Van Duiker. I was on the planning commission. We had Costco, we had Walmart, we had the SBA building when I was there. This is not what we're doing anymore, and this is, those are done, the big ones are done, and, and what's left is, is handled by state law. So of the, of the, what was left was 36 no meetings. One meeting was canceled because there was no quorum. So they had 14 real meetings in over two years. There were 14 meetings that actually had items on the agenda. And of those 14 meetings, there were 28 items, and of those 28 items, 11 of them were items just informational. This is our zoning code, this is an update, here's SB nine rules, here's this and that. So that was 11, and one report, that was a report on something. They had six use permits, or design review permits. There were six in, in two and a half years. And those are just generally adopted at staff recommendation. One thing to keep in mind is, we have a terrific staff, and I, I'm not saying that's not true. And they do a lot of work to get the, to, to you, to get to the planning commission. And so it's all done for you. In fact, Commissioner Flowers said one time, she asked the following, she says, "It seems like a straightforward project. What is the reason it came before the commission?" And so it's, it, it, to me, we're getting redundant. It's not a place to become a city council member. You're doing a better job becoming a member of your neighborhood association and getting involved in your neighborhood and meeting the people there. Okay, so, public comment. You know, I wish that we had public comment at planning commission meetings. Three meetings in over two and a half years had public comment at them. So that's not where people came and gave their public comment. And so it, there, most of everything was done, let's see, we had four lot splits. That's somebody who's got an acre and wants to put two, split his lot in half. That's, that's, so, the staff does make sure that everything is, way it's supposed to be is according to our codes. So I don't know that we need it. Okay, so it's only $12,000 a year. Couldn't we take that $12,000 and help out the feral cats? So it's, it's different things, it's not just the money. And I did go to the last one. It lasted 35 minutes with two items, and the attorney was there. And so I'm thinking, why are we paying for an attorney to sit there? His drive time, his, and then I'm thinking, you know, this is, anyway, so I just threw it out. If there's a, you know, a second, or a third, or a fourth to wait, I mean, until we have projects, we could reinstitute it like Rancho did if they needed, if we needed to. I don't see that we need it. I like to see people get involved in neighborhood associations and say, this is how you get elected. Because when I was, I just got invited, I was Brett Daniels' appointment to the planning commission, and I was very involved in my neighborhood. And so that is, that's what you do. And I know that, that our final decisions for the planning commission are done. There are no more. So, and when you want to correct what I said, fine, but that's my spot.
Who appointed you, Portia?
Steve Miller. Sorry, Steve Miller.
Just trying to remember. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
So I certainly like to address this. I certainly served on the planning commission. I think that there, when we have discussions like this, where, where it seems very abrupt to the public here, that suddenly we're talking about abolishing the planning commission, I see the planning commission as an opportunity, an additional opportunity to engage the community. That's what the big, for me, that's what the big benefit of the plan, planning commission is. It gives people an opportunity to come forward, even if they don't even, if, if they're tuned out, if, if we, if it only comes to the city council, that's a one-time deal. If, if they're not tuned in, there's a better shot of getting better community engagement if we, if we have the planning commission hear it, and then we, even if it does come to the city council, at least there's, it, it just offers an additional opportunity to engage the community. I think that's a responsibility that we have as a council, to keep that engagement, to, to heighten that engagement to the greatest degree that we can. So I will tell you that there's no way that I can support this, abolishing the planning commission.
Yeah, and I, I'll just add quickly that I know that just even recently, there was a very good, I think, example of, of the importance of the commission, and that was, there was a very small little development planned on Mariposa, and there was some dispute after, we thought it was going to be something simple or whatever, and, and it was the planning commission, I think, that was able to play, you know, I maybe shouldn't say it this way, but play referee, or at least look at the sides and, and make it, help make a decision. You know, not everybody's going to be happy with a decision, but, but I think they played a good role in being available to the community to, to kind of work that out. So I, I, I see that kind of value in the commission also. Okay, any other comments or questions? So do we have to, Amy, do we have to make a certain motion first before speaking? Go ahead.
I withdraw my motion to abolish.
Okay. So do we need to make a motion, if we want to put somebody on there, just make a motion in general without mentioning any names, to move forward, or how, how would we do that?
Well, to assist the city council, I can provide a list of the applicants, and I can put that up on the screen now to show the city council if you're at that point, if you would like to look at the applicants.
Do we have to decide between two and three, or, yeah, it's two and three?
And if further discussion is warranted between the options that are presented here, but I can show you a list of applicants if you'd like to consider those.
Does everyone feel like they're ready to make a decision if we go with option D? Yeah?
So, you said if we go with option D?
Oh, sorry, C. Look at y'all, you got me confused now. Jesus.
See. So.
I'd like to nominate.
Can, well, can you do that?
So first, we'll make the motion.
I have provided a spreadsheet that it's at the pleasure of the council. If you'd like to use it to take nominations, you could take one nomination or two nominations, or if you'd like to ask for nominations and make a motion and, and take a vote on an individual, council member's motion. That's at the pleasure of the mayor and the council.
Okay, I think we can keep it simple and just entertain a motion. So we'll start there. If it falls apart, maybe we'll go a different direction. Any motions regarding the, the item?
Okay. A motion on, on which?
You can make a motion by name if you decide.
Oh, okay. I'd like to nominate Kelsey Nelson.
I'll second it. There is a motion to nominate Kelsey Nelson to fill the at-large, unexpired term on the planning commission.
Aren't we going to do the spreadsheet? Is that, we're not doing the spreadsheet?
We're not doing the spreadsheet at this point. Yeah. So there is a motion to appoint, made by council member Schaefer, seconded by the mayor, to appoint Kelsey Nelson to fill the at-large, unexpired term on the planning commission. Any comments or questions to the motion? You'll roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lopez Taff?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
No.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kapinski-Kosta?
No.
And Mayor Daniels?
Aye. Okay. Next item, please.
We don't get, we don't get to pick our people.
Next item is department reports, and there are none. Next item is city manager items.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council members. Ashfina, your city manager, I've got a few updates for you tonight. First, we had a fantastic trail opening. I know that you spoke to this as part of your opening comments, but it was so fun, I just wanted to celebrate it one more time before we end the meeting here. The trail is officially open, so if you weren't able to make the ribbon-cutting event, please get out there. It's a fantastic amenity for the community, and it connects a lot of parks, schools, neighborhoods, market areas, fantastic community amenity. And this picture, you can see our city engineer, Lita Loomquist, who you heard from earlier tonight, on another major project with Auburn Boulevard Phase Two, but she and Director Kempner were very instrumental in making this happen, and certainly it wouldn't be here without them. So terrific work on that, a lot of coordination with partners, and just can't thank them enough for putting together a fantastic community amenity, and then please go out there and celebrate. It'll be celebrated for many generations to come.
Nice t-shirts.
We also have, at a Hearts for Heroes Gala, our Lieutenant Michael Wells from Citrus Heights Police Department is going to be honored at an upcoming gala that's being held by the Hearts for Heroes nonprofit that provides service animals for first responders, and that really helps them, you know, kind of work through, if they're having a tough day at work, or they've gone through a traumatic issue. You've seen our dog that's been donated from Hearts for Heroes, Ellie, that is available to those that work in our police department, and also not only for folks in the department, but some of the people they encounter that may be going through a stressful event. Ellie's been an assistance for them, and even here at City Hall, and even for yours truly, have experienced putting Ellie on a, a time of need. So great to see Lieutenant Wells being honored by Hearts for Heroes, and we participate in all they've been doing for the city and other first responders. Bruising the Burbs was spoken to earlier tonight. It is being held on Saturday, May 18th. It's a Sunrise Marketplace event. It's a lot of fun. Encourage people to attend. It starts at 5:00, and it'll run to 9:00 PM, and it's in the Sunrise Mall parking lot. And Public Service Recognition Week. It's been happening all week, and this is a week that commemorates city employees and public service in general, and our human resources team, which is Director Towars, Administrative Services Department, and our new human resources manager, Brody Lourda, have been putting together, along with their team, some fantastic events for all the city employees, and the city council went ahead and put together a proclamation that was signed by Mayor Daniels ahead of the week, and we were able to present that to staff on, on Monday, too. So really appreciate the team that have been involved in recognizing public service, but more importantly, everybody that's providing public service and all the city employees that do their best to improve the quality of life for Citrus Heights residents and businesses every day. And as was talked about earlier, we're going to have a public work showcase. It's going to be happening on Thursday, May 16th, and that'll run from 3:00 to 6:00 PM right here at Van Marren Park. And this is, I think, the, the third event? Yeah, it's the third event. So it's really kind of catching, catching its wind, so to speak, and there's, last year was a fantastic turnout, bigger than the first year, and I know there's a lot of people that are excited about it, but please turn out. It's not only a great time to learn about what happens through our general services team, as well as a lot of our contractors and then our partner agencies, but there's also opportunities to learn maybe about some potential career paths. And I remember at last year's event, there were folks that were taking applications and some jobs that come out of this. So great opportunity for families and those that are maybe looking to explore a career path. So again, that's Thursday, May 16th, from 3:00 to 6:00 at Van Marren. And that concludes my updates.
All right. Next item, please.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Anything? Nothing. Next item. Go ahead.
I kind of want to address the feral cat issue. Is there something we can put on an agenda that can, or something that we can direct you, to direct staff, that we don't starve cats, that we, is there something we can do?
I heard a lot of public comment tonight. We'll certainly be talking from a staff perspective about those public comments and, and learning more, but we do have, as part of our strategic plan, an animal control, animal services discussion item that we're going to be bringing back to council as part of that strategic plan.
Meanwhile, can we kind of ask not to give that advice that she requested?
Yeah, definitely going to talk to the team about some of the comments tonight.
All right. Anything else? Next item, please.
And there are no further items.
Okay, we are adjourned. I want to thank the high school kids who hung in there and made it to the end of the meeting. Thank you very much.[1792.33][1792.33]